Oh, with the, um, at this time we'll call, I mean, superintendent report, uh, school closure update.
Okay, my report, first off, I just wanna kinda follow up with Mr. Posey said. Our staff has been working extremely hard over the last few days and, um, from teaching staff to maintenance staff, custodial staff, instructional aides, everybody cafeteria staff, our leadership team, it's really been a team effort. We talked about having a positive attitude in the very beginning with the staff and, uh, they've demonstrated that very well. Of course, this is an ever-changing fluid situation and sometimes it can be very frustrating and they've handled it very well. And we've had meetings every day and they've responded valiant and so I just wanna commend, um, our staff and especially our leadership team, they've done outstanding, Mr. Carter, Mr. Williams, Coach Pantoja, Kendrick, Ms. Lakey, Mr. Cepeda have done fantastic, so, um, I just wanna tell you how much we appreciate them. As you know, as you may or may not know, today the, the governor issued an executive order that includes a statewide closure of Texas schools. It lines with the CDC and, uh, the order is effective midnight Friday, March twentieth and it will run through midnight Friday, April third. So all Texas schools are to temporarily close, um, but we are still to offer online and other learning options to students, so instruction will continue. And of course he recommended for all Texans to avoid gatherings of ten more people and et cetera. So we will follow that for sure and, um, as we move forward. Our response, just to kinda summarize some things, we've, um, gone to a virtual instruction which is led by Google Classroom and grades three through twelve. We feel like that's a consistent avenue of instruction that could take place at home. A lot of our, I know all of our high school students are familiar with it for sure already and, uh, we've added a, uh, seesaw app for teachers to use, um, that gives them a lot more flexibility in instruction. We've also have the paper packets for those students that don't have wifi or technology capabilities at home. I think we did a survey and eighty-nine percent of our kids have technology capabilities at home, so that was very promising, uh, to start with. And we have spent the last few days working together as a staff to review, mentor, teach and make sure that the Google Classroom situation is, uh, is something that we could implement starting Monday. And so, uh, very proud of our staff and their efforts the last few days to make that happen. As you, some may know that I provided a daily announcement each day around five PM. We post that on Parent Square, we post it on the school webpage and we post it on the school Facebook page for people to see and, uh, I think we've been getting good response. Uh, I haven't been getting too many phone calls, so, uh, I think it's been something that's positive as far as communication goes with the community. Uh, one thing that's been on our mind is, uh, the nutritional value for our students when we're out of school and to make sure that we're meeting those nutritional needs for the kids. Um, we've, we started, uh, today was the first day that we started, uh, providing meals for kids eighteen years or younger and we had with only, I wanna say maybe two days notice because of my daily statements that I send out. Uh, today we had, the first day was, we had twenty, served twenty breakfasts and sixty-six lunches today. And that was a grab and go concept where they drive up to the back of the cafeteria or walk to there and, um, we provide that meal, we take it to them in the parking lot and, and give it to them there. We would like to expand the operation further and I know that's something we're gonna discuss tonight, uh, to serve those kids that are not with, that don't normally drive to school or ride to school with their parents or walk, uh, 'cause we certainly have a multitude of kids that, uh, live in, in the outstretch of the district. So we wanna meet those kids' needs as well and that's something I would like to first to discuss tonight, I know you do too. The UIL made an announcement, I can't remember if it was today or yesterday, it was today, that, uh, they're going to, uh, start contests and competitions again on May fourth. You know, they feel like that the, the, um, when April sixth right now is when the governor says we could start back, that April sixth to that May fourth window is an opportunity for kids to practice again. I don't know if that means they're just gonna do playoffs at that point or what, you know, I, I have no idea. But, uh, they, they issued a statement today, UIL did, about May fourth being the date that they can begin again. As you well know, I've communicated with you about the STAR tests have been waived for this year. Um, that's, I think, a very helpful situation for our teachers and students. And so, for example, if a kid was a freshman student and they're taking English one and Algebra one, well, they no longer, that, that test, those two tests are waived for that student, so they don't need to take it again for graduation purposes. So if you're a senior student and you still need to pass the history test, US history test, and you were scheduled to take it, well, that's been waived, so now you meet graduation requirements. So it's basically giving them credit as long as they pass the course, that particular course. So, uh, you can't fail Algebra one and then get credit for taking the Algebra one test, ELC test. So, uh, you gotta make sure that their grades are successful on the STAR. Special Ed services has been another concern of ours. Right now, we really don't have clear, uh, outlook on that. I know we must offer services to the special Ed students if we're offering services to other students and, and so, um, we don't have clear, you know, uh, message about that yet. We're supposed to, maybe tomorrow is what the TEA, Texas Education Agency is telling us. We still have to conduct the ARDS, we, I think we conducted two ARDS yesterday and via phone, uh, call with the parents. So, uh, we still have to do that and we still have to service those kids, but right at this point, we don't know what that looks like, honestly. So, uh, that's still kinda up in the air. Another question I've, you know, received is about if I'm a senior about to graduate, you know, I'm in the running for valedictorian or slurrant, what's that gonna look like now that the spring semester is up in question? Well, I've, I've heard, you know, and it's not set in stone yet, but I've heard they'll may revert back to the end of the fall semester. Whatever, where you rank at the end of the fall semester is gonna finish out the year. That's not set in stone yet, but that's something they're considering. I know a lot of, a lot of parents or, and seniors are concerned about that part as well. If we decide to use the fall semester as, as the official classroom, we will have to adopt a resolution for that. The TEA says we need to do that. Right now, TEA says we have a hundred and forty-three confirmed cases in Texas. They're affecting twenty-seven counties, we have, uh, three deaths unfortunately, so, um. Another thing we need to think about as I finish up my superintendent report is future board meetings. 'Cause if we're in a situation where we just cannot meet, uh, because of social gathering restrictions, then we're gonna need to Zoom the meeting, it's, uh, or something, Skype the meeting or phone conference or something, conference call. So that's why we're kinda testing the Zoom out tonight to kinda see how that's gonna work. So our next regular scheduled meeting is April thirteenth. So hopefully this experiment today will help us out in making sure that is successful, whatever avenue we choose. So that's basically it, I know we've got some things to, to talk about especially and, and discuss and, um, let me make sure, check real quick in full time. Okay, I think we're okay. All right, and, uh, my leadership team, feel free to interject any time you want to throughout this process. So any questions about the superintendent report?
I guess, I guess the question is, uh, we'll start off just to, A, kinda give everybody general idea with the school closure update. I mean, closing the doors, what's the plan as far as personnel? Because, you know, the states require, state and federal recommending, you know, gatherings of ten or less and we've got, uh, fifty-plus employees. And so, I mean, I'm just trying to get a feel to see what are, are, you know, how are we gonna approach that?
Uh, great question, um, the leadership team and I met this morning and we discussed that. We have a, I have a recommendation for that and I certainly want your input on all that. But, uh, here's what we were thinking initially, um, that we start with our virtual instruction on Monday, okay? Google Classroom, paper packets, et cetera, et cetera. We will allow students to come pick up, uh, their locker, uh, items and their lockers and books and if they need a calculator, if they need a Chromebook, if they need whatever, you know, paper, pencils and stuff like that. But our original, what I, what I would suggest that we do is that we start off with teachers coming on Mondays and Wednesdays, two days a week. They can, uh, work out of their room, isolated in their rooms, um, and things like that. Basically doing office hours, making phone calls, making copies if needed, whatever, uh, they may need to do. Custodial staff come on Tuesdays and Thursdays, that way they kinda follow up. The, um, the teaching staff for being in the building, they come in behind them and clean and things like that. And then the, the maintenance staff following the same as custodial, Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then the, when we get it talking into the meals, we were thinking about the, the cafeteria people working on Mondays and Thursdays, uh, serving the, providing meals for kids. Now, when I say Mondays and Thursdays, here's what I'm thinking, like if, um, if a cafeteria staff comes in on Monday and what we would, what we could do is serve breakfast and lunch together from eight AM to nine AM in the morning. So we're giving, if somebody drives up, we're gonna give them breakfast and lunch from Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. Three days worth of meals at that one time on Monday morning. Then on Thursday morning, they come in and do the same thing for Thursday and Friday. So we're providing five meals times two, breakfast and lunch, uh, per week, but we're only meeting up here twice a week with instructional aides helping in the delivery and, and the creation of those meals and things like that. Now, of course, you're concerned about, okay, whether the teacher says, you know, Mr. Cook, I just, um, I don't feel good today. I think I, is it all right if I work from home? I'd say by all means, I mean, if you, there's any doubt, you stay home and if they can work from home, they don't need to make copies or what, even if they did, they could notify us and we'd do it for them. I mean, it's, it's a team effort on that deal. So that's kinda the idea and, and it's hard to designate really, you say, okay, we're gonna be here from eight to three-thirty on those days and things like that. But, you know, some teachers, they may not feel comfortable, uh, coming, you know, we've got a couple of teachers with health issues and they don't feel comfortable and safe and that's okay, you know? We gotta give, I think we need to be flexible in that situation, um, and allow them the opportunity to come if they want to. If they, if they feel like they'd be successful with learning for, teaching the kids from home, then we allow that as well because we really can't force them, you know, per se, and I wouldn't want to. It's not, it's obviously very serious, I mean, the governor's taking serious action here and, uh, but at the same time, we want everybody to be compensated like they have been. I don't feel like it's, uh, I don't think it's right for us to take away pay just because they're not up here. They're professionals, I know they're gonna work from wherever they're at and so I think we, we can honor them by adopting this resolution tonight to make sure, this is for the hourly pay, by the way, um, the resolution is, but, uh, that's kinda the idea we were thinking about. Certainly, uh, the teachers can come and go other days, you know, we're not limiting, we're not saying, um, you know, if, if, if they're worried about, you know, um, childcare and things like that and they're not part of our system already in childcare, uh, and they're making plans and, and they can only come up between these two hours right here, then by all means, do, do what you need to do. Uh, we'll, we'll be answering the phones on those days, on Mondays and Wednesdays. Uh, we'll be answering emails all week, um, and things like that. So, uh, that's kinda the, the thought process we were, we had, uh, starting Monday if we could move forward with that. Certainly we want your input and guidance on that.
I mean, I kinda probably even worded it more of, you know, you are, you can come up, make it to where they can work home if possible.
Yeah.
You know, but not make them, not say come up, say, we're gonna have an open time to when, you know, certain groups might be able to come up, to try and limit as much, but more of if you can work from home, you can do it. Just because that's gonna limit the exposure and all that. And so, I mean, I was kinda thinking, I was just kinda, I'm gonna go off on a little thing here, but I was driving to work this morning and I sat there and I got a grin on my face and the reason is, is yes, this is a stressful time for the teachers, but I wanna say this is also a perfect opportunity for our teachers to excel because they don't have to teach towards a STAR test. They have the opportunity to educate our t, our kids best to their ability without the restrictions of that STAR test and I know they will and they can think outside the box and create beautiful new plans. And so I'm kinda excited to see what's gonna come. My daughters is nervous as can be, my son just doesn't care. But for me, I'm, I'm kinda seeing some excitement in it because I know my mom's thirty-year teacher and she hated this standardized testing. And this is a time where we can provide instructional aid and do what teachers got in this for, to educate the kids. And so it's a weird time, it's a stressful time, but I think it's a great opportunity for them and I think you allow as much flexibility at this time to, one, stay home if they want. Like you said, it's okay, if you're worried, stay.
That's right.
But yes, provide certain hours of the time, yeah, maybe even just certain, okay, uh, yeah, I wouldn't make it a free four whenever you can come because you wanna base it off cleaning cycles. So, you know, maybe certain, you know, groups, you know, say, hey, you can come in, you know, these cup, these time of day or have a signup sheet, when might be a good time, you know, email it around or something. I mean, yeah, there's gonna still be flexibility, but if you need to come in.
Yeah.
You know, if you'd like to come, you know, check something, get something out. But, um, I try the best as possible to make the least amount of people coming into this facility. That would be the best goal you can do, is the less that comes, the better off we're gonna be at stopping this. And so that's kinda my thinking, I don't know what everybody else is thinking, but, um, I, the reason I was asking for some of those numbers as far as the cafeteria, I'll kinda go into that too while I'm talking 'cause everybody's kinda on the quiet end, is this is a very tough time for our community as well. You know, all mandated closures, you know, no gatherings greater than ten people, they're shutting restaurants, you know, in dining down is maybe even us, it may cost us a little more, but we're not spending as much on overall kids, but maybe even look at maybe two days out of the week contracting with our local eateries, providing breakfast burritos one day, providing brisket sandwiches, um, to the ones that have ordered so that, one, we can support our local community, support our local businesses because they're gonna be hurting and, I mean, I'm thinking outside box kinda concepts, but, you know, we gotta think of, we're doing it, we're working for a community and so just a thought I had is, is, you know, is something like that a feasible idea? But, you know, we gotta take care of our community and, you know, it's, we take care of our kids and our community and if, if that's something that they can prepare and we pick up the box and distribute it out, I mean, that might help out some. I'm just doing a little out-of-box thinking 'cause this is the time that happens.
I got a question on like the, uh, the paper packets for students. Is that gonna be a daily thing or are they gonna prepare it for an entire week and they get it once and?
We've recommended an entire week.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, that might be difficult for them to come every day to pick something up.
Yeah, uh, the entire week and then we were gonna utilize the, uh, food delivery for like the bus routes to the kids out in the perimeter, just use their normal bus stops, you know? But we may, we may not take a bus, we may take a suburban or something like that, but a school vehicle and we would, and we could drop off packets, receive packets at the same time and say, okay, it's due next week, you know? So we're looking at that a week at a time.
Good.
I do wanna mention one thing real quick, uh, uh, we have a, I don't know if you've been to our website lately and I, I want Mr. Carter to bring this up on the screen, maybe if he can do that, I, I'm not sure about the Zoom thing. But, uh, uh, Mr. Carter created this website, I want you to see and if you would, Mr. Carter, would you explain to them what all that entails?
Essentially, I, I just tried to put all of the closure information and we've disengaged the, uh, front page of our website. This is what everybody goes to, this is exactly what they see. We give all of our instructional delivery options. This is the app that we're, we're really pushing hard, um, especially for those that have the paper copies. It is very good about taking a picture and sending in the work so that our people aren't touching papers. I mean, we're trying to limit as much touching as possible and so, um, and then what I've done is, is worked with the classroom teachers to find out exactly what all programs they're utilizing and put the links on those specific ones. So if you're a third grader, you can go and look at the, the websites that you're, you're currently using and it's just a definitely a different, you know, a, a, a very quick place to go to find the, the links that you need. And then, um, I provided the CDC, um, safety information and then links to our local government websites so that if there's anything that they need. And then as we get more information, we will just continue to add to this one page so that no one's having to click fifty million different places, everything is in one spot, um, all the way through. So that's essentially more or less what we've, what we've done with it, um, is to try to do this and then we'll have more tutorials and everything else, um, as we get along through this.
So if you go to our website, that's the first thing you see right there and it talks about the two different avenues of digital with the Google Classroom versus the paper-based and plus it has my daily announcements on there as well.
Yes.
So Mr. Carter created that, I want you all to know that and, uh, and...
It helped me get my son logged on today. It helped me get my son logged on today.
There you go, whatever we can do.
It worked.
Do we still have the Remind app for operation here?
Uh, Remind one-on-one was never, we never really had that as a, uh, as an option. Uh, teachers did use it, um, individually, but we had Parent Square and then we have, and we still utilize Parent Square, but then we had, uh, School Messenger and we had, I don't know which one you're talking about.
The one I was thinking about is the one that you can more or less call at the school and it go, you wanna get hold of a teacher and that would go straight through to her, her cellphone or something without causing a conflict.
Uh, Parent Square will do that and then so will, uh, um, uh, Google Voice. And so that's what some of our parents or, or our teachers were trying to get up and running is just so we have that as well, so.
On our cafeteria, we're gonna still have normal food delivery days coming in?
What do you mean, uh, coming in?
I mean, like if we just have our cafeteria staff here on Monday and Thursday, what delivery truck runs on Tuesday?
They run on Fridays, I think, so they would have to meet them on Fridays. I, I don't know if they will alternate, you know, it give us an option maybe to come on Thursday since we're already here. That's something I would have to ask Ms. Adkins, but, uh, they norm, I think they normally come on Fridays.
Mr. Kelly, I'm just kinda curious, um, uh, the governor's shutting everything down till April the third, third. Are they expecting the curve to go down? Is that what that is, why, why is April the third, that doesn't seem like enough time?
It really doesn't seem like it to me as well, um, kinda from what I saw on the national post from the president and they're, they're, they're thinking if, if everybody is strict with the fifteen days and I think that's why they're doing it, is to hit everybody based off what's recommended, fifteen days of isolation or social distancing, then that will help drop that health, health demand that potentially can happen. And so there, you know, that's why he did say that they would reevaluate it and it may be longer, but he's probably just doing it two weeks and reevaluating and deciding how the trends are going. But I, I think it's just based off the fifteen days that's recommended by the CDC and the, uh, president to do fifteen days of, uh, social distancing.
I guess, asking that question, I'm, I'm wondering with the administration, you're anticipating this going longer?
Well, I guess, this virus, I mean, a lot of these viruses, I mean, they can replicate when the temperature gets.
Well, I mean, like, that's, that's a theory, but, uh, you know, Australia's in summer and they're, they're battling it. So the question is, is this one really heat, really, is it gonna? It's a new strain, so they don't know its trends. It's not a new virus, but it's a new strain, so they don't know its trends.
They said, I just heard the news at, at Japan, wherever it started, they said it, they had no more cases of.
Yeah, it's, it's dropped off.
Dropped off extremely, it's been three months.
We can hope, but, you know, there's the, there's still the unknown.
Well, like I said, it's gonna tell that fifteen days, it's the, it's just the public's gonna be, take bear of it and not take it as, we're off.
I can even tell you those testing numbers to me don't mean anything, how many positives, how many negatives because, I mean, I've, I mean, you see it all the time, people come in with cough, they're negative, but you can't test them for it, I mean, even though they say there's more testing supplies. In this area, there is not enough testing supplies to test everybody and you're run by strict guidelines and so, uh, you know, are those numbers accurate? I mean, there's probably a whole lot more that, than that going on, than those numbers. I can almost guarantee it.
Cause they're still trying to figure it out.
And so, I guarantee there's a whole lot more than a hundred, what did you say, a hundred and forty something?
Forty-three.
I believe they said that at a national press conference today, is that it was only ten percent that they could guarantee. So there's ninety percent of the population that has it, not, ninety percent of the ones that have it have not been tested.
Correct.
So, and whatever that number of ninety, they don't know what that is.
And at the beginning, they said sixty percent would be possibly.
Is anyone else having questions over the superintendent's report? Anyone else like to make any comments, administration?
I would say maybe we can consider an indefinite status right now of school closure. Instead of just saying April third, maybe we can just say indefinite and whenever that, you know, whenever it ends, um, I could give the students and parents a week's worth of notice and say we're coming back on this Monday.
I think that would, one, create, uh, you know, more comfort in everybody knowing what's gonna, you know, okay, so, mm, two weeks, okay?
Yeah.
All right, now we gotta wait, now, I, I agree, I think indefinite.
And many of the schools have given that status.
And many of the schools have given that status.
Abilene I C D, Wally I C D, Holly I C D, I think that all of them. Answered.
Is anyone against that status being set up?
What are we gonna do about limited students coming up here? After you get your initial, clean out your lockers or whatever, when you're gonna lock the doors to them or?
We are, they can, uh, if they need to come up here for whatever reason, the door will be locked and they'll have to call. Uh, and if the teachers only come on Monday and Wednesday, that's the two days they can come. Um, and then it would be just a one at a time deal in the building. If, 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 if they even come in, the best bet would just take the stuff to them, take the homework to them, whatever we need to. We really don't want anybody in here.
I would say have them take everything out of their locker and not have a reason to come up here.
I would, I would even say, you know, I mean, it's gonna be rough next week, but I would even say just have the students call and come and have them come in limited numbers to really streamline it so you don't have all three hundred kids. I know it's not gonna be three hundred, but all of them just coming to get their stuff and then there it is, the whole concept is blown. I say you have them just, you know, put the announcement, if you need to get, you, come get your stuff, call, we'll sketch, you know, just have a spreadsheet and this is your time, this is the time you come get it.
As far as buildings go, we didn't really have any intention of letting them in the building.
Yeah.
Like, what's your locker number?
Oh, okay.
What all do you need?
Yeah, yeah.
You can leave it in your car and we'll bring it to you.
What we're considering is, is called a selective lockdown.
Yeah.
That means that we select who comes in and who does not. We, no one that is not a employee of Roby C I S D would be allowed in any building.
Yeah.
Unless there is a need to do so, otherwise we will transfer everything at the door.
That'd be perfect, yeah.
But we don't necessarily want them waiting up in line at the door either, so.
Yeah, just have call and say.
Go back to your car and let me change your car.
Yeah, just walk it out to the parking lot or they can drive through the.
Maybe have them, maybe let them know to come through a de- designated spot. So that like the, the high school in this end can come to the front and maybe elementary.
Leave them in their cars.
So they can stay in their car.
You can leave them in their car, yes.
Stay in that, they stay in their car, maybe something like that, yeah, that's a good idea.
Seen a business model today that they closed down, be no outside coming in, doors locked. No more than one employee per room, no contact. No, one person per vehicle.
That's why everything else is work from home.
That's what Texas I did, we had to go in the shop and get our mandar, you know, our seven foot, eight foot department. Everybody had to be in their own vehicle for ten hours by the staff, nobody being together. We already did that this, last week.
Is that why your throat's a little sore from singing so much? I'm just kidding.
Unfortunately, they, unfortunately, they sent me home for a week.
Yeah, I know, I know.
They sent me home, so.
Just had to make a singing joke.
Radio didn't work in the truck.
That's right.
The windows won't ever be the same.
All right, if there's nothing else on the uh, superintendent's report, then we'll go to the action items. We have action item A, just to review approved, disapproved resolution regarding employee compensation during the periods of school closure and granting the superintendent certain authority related to employees duty days of compensation.
Well, in our uh, local policy, board policy, DEA local, there's a paragraph down at the bottom. It says if the board chooses to pay employees during an emergency closure for which the workdays are not scheduled to be made up at a later date, then that authorization shall be by resolution or other board actions shall reflect the purpose of, by the expenditure. So that's the purpose of this resolution before you. There, I've kind of filled it in and it's rather lengthy, uh, it's almost two pages. Um, but it's, it's basically allowing us to pay our hourly employees um, uh, their full um, pay. Uh, even if they're not up here working the whole time, uh, to be, we've already had, this is already budgeted. I mean, it's not anything that's new expenditure or anything like that. But I feel like that we should honor our employees with their, with their pay, so.
Okay, I've got a question about uh, contract employees. So we may have some contract employees that say, I just don't feel comfortable about coming to school. Is that, will this apply to them that they get paid also or?
Yeah, I think we just, we have to be flexible on that, yeah.
I want to make sure that they're.
Yeah.
Taking care of all of their cover.
We're trying to make it equitable across the board, whether you're an instructional aide, teacher, cafeteria worker, maintenance. I mean, everybody needs to be, uh, their, their, their worth is, you know, is important and their pay is important and we want to be consistent across the board.
And especially, you know, heaven forbid, one of the employees comes down with a sickness. We want to make sure that they're not deducted pay.
Yes, and another thing too, you know, like if you're a bus driver, you know, you get extra, that's part of, that's extra money if you drive a morning and afternoon route and, you know, we don't want them to lose that as well, you know. So even though we're not driving, we might be driving Suburbans to deliver meals and things like that. But uh, so uh, that's included as well.
So is that something you plan on doing is having the bus drivers possibly drive the school vehicles rather than a, a, a administration or something? Well, I mean, it would be a, a regular bus driver taking their route and?
Yeah, we'd have the, the bus, regular bus driver because they're familiar with their route and the monitor that they normally have on their bus. And if they need an instructional aide to go with them, uh, we can certainly do that as well, so.
But they're gonna make this run, say, twice a week, but you're gonna pay them for the whole week what they normally?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
The only thing I got to add, what about substitutes?
Um, you know, I, I, I think we had talked about or we, before that Abilene, I think is paying their an average monthly pay or something like that.
Something about a hundred hours or a hundred days, average something.
And, you know, I, honestly, I can't answer that right now because I, I just, um, having, I've given it some thought, but um, I'm not sure on that one, what, what y'all's thoughts on that?
Uh, my personal opinion is I, I think the federal government's gonna work with some of those uh, individuals. And let's just wait and see how that works out. That's my, my opinion.
I mean, we say, we have some people that are valuable subs, you know, that have, they, they're reliable, we call them and certainly that's, it's important, uh, but I don't think we have a clear vision of that right now.
Are there some that like work like twice a week, call consistently or once a week or anything like that that, that you know of?
They have been because of stock shows, I mean, we had lately, so they've had, there's some of them been pretty consistent.
And even before that, I mean, I mean, they're, I mean, are they doing it for the extra, I mean, it's on to think of the ones that are really the consistent ones that have shown, you know, if you, maybe even to think of. I mean, I know thinking of, the government should help, we should help, but I, 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 I mean, I think for most of them, yeah, but I think if we look at also potentially who's been working a whole lot and is that something that's feeding some kids mouths? And, you know, when's the money gonna come even from them? And so, uh, from the government, I mean, that's one of those, if you have one that's worked maybe twice a week consistently for a majority of the, you know, or a certain amount of time that they've put into this school, maybe look at a little subsidy to kind of help them out, I mean, I'd.
It's budgeted as well, so I mean, we do have a budget for substitutes.
But the danger of it is, I see is if you help one, you don't help all of them.
You gotta see what the government's, I mean, I think, get an idea what Jose said about what the compensation of the government's gonna give those. Like I know there's a lot of them, there's, there's some aid going on right now, I believe.
Kind of wait and see and if, if it doesn't come out to them, then we can address it.
Look at that.
Again.
I was just thinking the monthly average, what they've done since the first of the year, just carry that on out the next two months and end of the year and.
It, it is something, I guess you, we could look at it.
Just put the numbers down just in case it does.
Yeah, that by that time, the next meeting, we've kind of, maybe kind of pull the numbers together and we can discuss it.
Sure.
And.
April thirteenth, we can discuss it again.
And so kind of look at that and then we can pull those numbers and at least have those in front of us.
Okay, we have the force of resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Regarding the employee compensation.
Chris has made a motion, Kevin. Seconded it, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next is action item B, uh, review approved, disapprove of resolution that gives the superintendent the authority to make emergency purchases of fifteen thousand dollars or more without prior board approval.
You know, and it's, this is just an emergency situation that we're in and uh, mo- it's, this resolution is consistent from district to district. We're all looking at this resolution and approving it, but if there's a situation come up that we need to order something to help the safety of our kids or to help our teachers be successful or whatever, this would just give me the authority to do it without calling another board meeting and having to do, uh, of course, I would ask you beforehand, you know, I would communicate that with you, I'm not gonna spend more than fifteen thousand dollars without you knowing. But uh, uh, that way we don't have to have another board meeting to get approval, so.
Is this at one time?
I think it's multiple times, I think it's, it'd be multiple times through this crisis period only.
Any other discussion? What's the pleasure of the board?
Uh, motion to approve. I'll second it.
Mark's made a motion to approve the resolution to give Mr. Cook the purchasing power of fifteen thousand or more without the board approval, seconded by Mr. Kelly. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Next is uh, action item C.
Here, uh.
Re- uh, review approved, disapproved, moving the Roby C I S D bond election from May the second to tw- uh, twenty twenty to November the third, twenty twenty.
I've been in, of course, the governor made a proclamation regarding this and I've been in contact with Sarah Leon, who's our bond counsel. And emailed her about it and she, she replied and said, I'm gonna read her email. As discussed, the option, the option to delay your election until November has become an available option for you. So it's not mandatory that we push it to November, but it is an option. The Secretary of State's office advises that if the district decides to move to the November election date, you need to take action before the first day of early voting, which is April twentieth. However, the deadline for posting notice by the county is April thirteenth. So we are in the process of creating a draft board resolution if that's the direction you plan to take it, if you want to move it to November. So it's basically our option right now, now, will that change two weeks from now? The governor may come back and say, all elections are moved to November and we don't have a choice. But right now, we do have a choice because we are hosting our own, we're running our own bond election. You know, we're not running it through uh, the county office.
If we move it to November, will we then run it through the county office?
Yes, sir, uh, I think Ms. Thompson would do all those elections and I think we should run it through the county at that time in November.
It's cheaper for us to run it through the county election than it is to host it ourselves, is it not?
It is, uh, but it's not a great expense, um, because the county is, it offered machine to us at no charge. So we're having, we're having to buy the, the ballots, we're having to uh, purchase some things, but we're talking about limited.
Have we done that already?
Yes, sir.
Will, can they still be used in November or they?
I don't know about that.
They dated.
Or is there a return policy?
Probably not through.
Well, what I would be concerned about is with all this going on is you're not gonna be able to have town hall meetings and get the information out to the public and it would probably be a lost cause anyways.
Plus all, I mean, the, the oil price has been down, I mean, there's just a lot of uncertainty, people, I think they're gonna, they're gonna. I think just go. I mean, we got more chance in November, I mean, my opinion.
I think just going pure on the, you don't want people coming, you want to keep social distancing and at time, they're still that gray. Better play it on the safe side. And the oil prices and all, the town hall meetings. Town hall meetings are also. Perfect, it's perfect, uh, you know, that just adds to it, so I kind of, I'd say postpone it.
I've been coughing since about September or October.
You're the one that brought it.
You have a town hanging.
So is that a uh, motion?
I'll motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Kevin Kelly has made a motion to approve moving the election to November the third, seconded by Mr. Estes. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Okay, next is uh, action item D.
We can't do B, uh, that one was not uh, posted with the hour notice, so we just need to skip B.
Uh, no action on out of D?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we need to go on to the talk session?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Does anyone else have anything that they'd like to bring up? While I'm saying my thank yous, I would like to thank Mr. Estes and Mr. Raspberry for filling in for me and I understand you did a fine job whenever I was out, I do appreciate that. Uh, if we were having, I mean, if things were a normal situation, I would have been gone in April again. But that's been canceled and taken out too, so. If there's nothing else, we need one more motion to adjourn?
I just want to say one thing.
Absolutely.
The one, the one other thing, big thing is, is to remember and you're do, it's doing a great job, but is during disaster, communication is the key. And so really being sure to, even communicating to public, teachers, board, just really keep, you know, over communicating is better than under communicating, so that goes for everybody. If you have questions or anything, just please communicate it out because coming together as a community is the key and keeping uh, social distancing, I mean, we really gotta do our best for that. And, you know, emails and tech, emails are probably the best way, but just to communicate, over communicate if you ask me, but. I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Mr. Kelly has made a motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Dakota, any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
What do you do about governors' essential staff? How do we define that? Just whoever needs to be?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
The governor said essential staff, I didn't know how we was dividing that up.
I don't know if you give clarification on that, but.
That's kind of a, it's a fun gray, but I think if you can, like I said earlier, if you can keep the least amount of people in the building, if you can do it from home, do it from home.
Only reason I ask that, I got told yesterday that there was some kids left Abilene. They're gonna move to Roby, well, they can't get their transcript stuff from Abilene to enroll here. It's because they're key staff or whatever, you know, it's just kind of.
It's not there.
How do you do it?
Let's treat the situation.
It's just, yeah, this kind of the administration, they gotta pack us together and they gotta mail it to them.
Are you talking about a parent specifically? Okay, I talked to her today, I told her.